Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Puente, Senior Reporter with the Long Beach Post, representing the Post and the Long Beach Business Journal.
And I'm Harry Saltskaver, the Executive Editor of the Grunion Gazette, representing the Gazette, The Press Telegram, and all my colleagues from across the Southern California News Group. We're proud to be partnering with other Long Beach publications to sponsor these live political forums during this very significant election season. In just a moment, we'll start our debate between the candidates for the Long Beach City Council Second District seat. But first, a few notes and ground rules about this evening. This event is streaming live, online across the websites and social media channels of our respective publications. But you will also be able to watch rebroadcasts online afterwards.
Candidates understand their microphones and cameras are on continuously throughout this broadcast. Both candidates will be asked to provide an opening statement before we jump into questions. With the questions come from our reporters and our community members, voters in the Second District. We'll alternate who goes first between the two candidates, and we flipped a coin to decide who goes first. Questions are known only to the two of us. They have not been shared with the candidates. And we do have two notes of disclosure for tonight's debate. For first disclosure, one of the participants, Cindy Allen, is a former owner of the Long Beach Post, but she has not had any involvement with the Post since she sold it in June 2018. And Harry is also a former member of the Long Beach Water Board's Board of Commissioners, which did business with Cindy Allen's former company ETA Advertising, but Harry is no longer on the Water Board.
That's correct. Okay, each candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond to each question. If candidates request a rebuttal, or a moderator asks to follow a question, responses will be limited to one minute. We will give you a 15-second warning. And finally, this has been a heated campaign, and both sides have issued allegations against the other. The questions in this debate, however, will focus on the issues facing residents in District Two and the city as a whole. And with that, we'd like to introduce and welcome our candidates for District Two, Cindy Allen and Robert Fox. Cindy, I believe you won the coin toss going to open for us.
Yes. Thank you so much, and I really appreciate everyone that has tuned in and also appreciate the newsrooms for doing this. Just though, my name is Cindy Allen, and I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Long Beach, and I just love living in Long Beach, and I love living in the Second District. I was raised on the West Side by a single mom, and we depended, we were dependent on government assistance to get by. I went to Stevens, I went to Long Beach Poly, I went to Long Beach City, Long Beach State, and got my master's degree in public administration. I also, like they said earlier, started several businesses here in downtown Long Beach. I was able to lift myself out of poverty, and I want to make sure that everyone in the Second District, and I mean everyone, has the same opportunities that I have and all the opportunities that this great city has given to me. I am the only candidate in this race that is endorsed by the Democrat Party, and I am the true progressive reformer in this race. I just want to thank you, and I appreciate answering your questions. Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Good evening to all of my friends and neighbors in the Second District. I've been here for 36 years. I own a house on Broadway. I bought in 1992, been living there ever since. Together with the residents of the Second District, I've helped form the Neighborhood Associations of the Second, except for Orca. They were independent in the 2000s. In serving the city of Long Beach for three decades, I've been honored to be elected Chairman of the Council of Business Organizations and Chairman of the Council of Neighborhood Organizations. This is how we get to know Long Beach, by serving in the grassroots. I am a member of the Long Beach Reform Coalition, and I am a reform candidate. Because we have serious problems here in the city, we are facing right now the worst depression on record. We've survived depressions before in the past. 1991, I was on the committees that formed the three pillars of our economy: tourism, trade, technology. Now we're going to have to do some reinvention again. To that effect, I have worked really hard for months, and I have come up with an incredible program to forgive the rents, which are owing to small mom-and-pop landlords. This is a special benefit assessment district. It's voluntary. I've worked with John Gross and the City Management Department, as well as management companies who do special assessment districts. They will get a lump sum that takes care of the lost rent, on the condition that they forgive the rents where they're getting the money from. This means that we get to start from scratch again without any incriminations, and we're made to hold.
Mr. Fox?
I have a lot more plans, of course, on my website. Thank you so much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Oh, I'll go first. Mr. Fox, you get the first question.
Sure.
How would you have the city help the economy recover? How would you help small businesses, and how would you pay for it?
Well, the first thing I would do is what we did in the past. We've lowered the business license fees. Nancy Allsweater and I were President of the Business License Fee Review Board, and we convinced the city to lower the fees, and that was part of our stimulus package. Also, when we went through that recession, we had a marketing agent here that would actually bring businesses into the city. But more importantly for us, I want us to be the small business capital of the state of California. I'd like us to, right now, lower the business license fee to $150 and lower the Health Department fee to $50. Right now, it's $1,100. We need to give our people a break. I want to start new businesses here. We are the most diverse city on the coast, and we have incredible talent. How about a $50 introductory business license? And we train people how to do a business. You may know how to bake an apple pie, but you may not know how to do an apple pie business. So let's train you on Quicken and QuickBooks Pro, and tell you about payroll, and tell you about taxes, tell you about how to do accounting, so you don't get ripped off. These are important things. We have talented people in the Second District and throughout the city. So I think it's clear that we don't have an incentive for huge corporations to come here right at the moment, unless we do a lot of outreach and marketing. So let's work with our people. The sales tax increment that would come from an explosion of small businesses in the city would be a continual dependable stream of income for the city of Long Beach. Let's keep our tax increments here in the city, instead of this horrible percentage that we have, that 88% of our people work outside the city of Long Beach. So business recovery for me is grassroots, and...
You've got 15 seconds.
Oh, thanks. We have the best asset in the world, and that's our people. And I think that we should utilize it, but let's give them a chance with something they can afford. It's a big risk to start your own small little business.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, I'm not telling anyone anything new, that businesses are struggling more now than ever before. We have unprecedented unemployment rate, and so many of these businesses that I have talked to aren't going to make it through this. So I think first and foremost, what we can do to help the economy is we need to help get these businesses open safely. And so some of the things that I really have liked what the city has done is just kind of take away the red tape. Businesses have a lot of work, and any of you that have done this before, you know, it's sometimes the rules and regulations that businesses have to go through are tough. I was excited to see that the city worked very quickly on getting these restaurants open by doing the open streets or the parklets. Before, that would have been quite a process for people to go through and get those open. And so the more that we can do to assist businesses and getting their employees back to work is going to be super important. And also, the city fees, you know, we have to step back and say, how do we make this easier on businesses? When big businesses are paying the same fee as small businesses, it just doesn't make sense to me when they're not using all the same services that smaller businesses are using. So I'd like to see the city step back and say, what can we do to help especially, you know, a lot of these small businesses? I get back open, and I'm open to waiving fees, and whatever we need to do, we have to, we have to be ready as electeds to help these businesses get back, get people back to work.
Thank you.
Next question, police reform has been a major issue in cities across the country this year. Do you think there should be police reform in Long Beach? And if so, what would that look like? Cindy, we'll start with you.
Absolutely. You know, I was talking about police reform and the primary. I can tell you from knocking on doors in the Second District, people do not want to be overpoliced. I talk about this back in the 80s and 90s, when I was a police officer. You know, getting police officers out of the uniform and getting them back in the community and knowing the community and working in the community. We also need to look at, you know, early warning systems. I can tell you, if they had that, the tragic murder of Mr. Floyd would not have happened. We need to be able to track bad behavior in police officers, and we need to be transparent. I want transparency in everything that we do at the Police Department. And I also want to look at the CPCC. You know, the way that it works now is, you know, everything, if you're, there's a complaint against an officer, the CPCC gets it long after it's already been through the system. And I would like to see the CPCC have true charter reform. I would like to see that they have their own private investigators, that they're at the table at the beginning of an allegation of bad conduct with a police officer. And I can tell you that our community, and especially the Second District, is demanding this transparency in the Police Department. And I can tell you, there's not a better person that can lead this reform than me. I know it intimately. I have the lived experience. And I can tell you that I will, I will, I will work hard to make sure that there's true transparency, you know, within the, within the, within all the ranks. And not only on the Police Department, we need transparency in the criminal justice system as well.
You have 15 seconds.
We have to, we have to admit and first acknowledge that there is true systemic racism, and we have to work, we have to work very hard, especially as electeds, to make sure that we address that.
And a quick, quick follow-up for you, Cindy. As a police officer, a Long Beach police officer in the 1990s, you were involved in an officer-involved shooting where you shot an unarmed man. How has this shaped your views of police reform now and criticism from the Black Lives Matters movement?
Well, first of all, I did not shoot an unarmed man. I got dispatched to a call with a man with a gun, and it was a very dangerous situation in the middle of the night. I was, one had him eight. I went to this call, and the witnesses, including the calling party, it was pretty hectic. He had guns. And so when we, I was assisted by another officer, and when he came out of the car, he made aggressive behavior. And unfortunately, it's the worst thing that an officer could be in a situation to have to take care of it, because I was in fear of the citizens, I was in fear of my own life, and so he had several guns. And I just, I just want to, like I said, it's a very worst thing that we could be asked to do. And I am, I absolutely, you know, I think it's just really sad that there's this, this stuff that I've seen Mr. Fox put out about this incident, it's just not, it's just not true. And so I have asked that the city put out the tapes and all the information, just so the citizens are really clear. You know, I was put in a very difficult situation. This man brought guns to a hotel and was victimizing a woman, and I came in the middle of the night to protect a woman. And so I just want to make sure that when we talk about this, that everybody gets their facts straight, because this is just not true.
How has this shaped your views on the issue today?
Oh, well, I can tell you, so as far as, like, views as far as specifically, what are you views on police reform? Oh, absolutely. Listen, I was, I was a, I was a policewoman back in the 80s, when very few women were doing this job. This wasn't, this wasn't easy on me, and I, I'm in no denial that we are, we absolutely have to have police reform. You know, and, and so I can talk about my own experiences, I can talk about my lived experiences, and I can tell you that I am, and I don't know that there's, there's, there's not very many even, there's not even a single police officer that doesn't, I mean, look at like where we're at today and how we get here, and it makes me upset. It makes me, it makes me angry. And so I am, I'm absolutely going to be a voice. I'm going to be an advocate for the, for the Second District for police reform, and I'm the best person to do that.
Thank you. And Robert, same question for you. How do you, would you...
Do I get to do a rebuttal on that question, the second one?
Yeah, you can do rebuttal. We'll hear your answers to the question first.
I am obviously on the Reform Coalition. One of our major policy issues are police reform. I don't want to just talk the talk. I want to walk the walk. That means I am proposing a 30% reallocation of funds from our Police Department budget, which is 48% of the budget of the city of Long Beach. We need to hire mental health providers and social service workers. And if we have any money left over, we need transitional housing, because our homeless population is exploding, and we need to do something clearly in the middle of COVID-19. We do need better training. Our police officers only have to have 700 hours of training. A cosmetologist has 1,500. I find that pretty weird. Also, the level of education is only high school diploma, if that. And they're making life and death decisions about us. So I think a college degree is absolutely required. I don't think the city should pay for it. I think, you know, like, I went to college and paid for my own college. I worked all the way through it. And I think that's a base minimum standard. As for the Citizens Police Complaint Commission, it is in the Charter. It was written in 1992. It's 1150 in the city charter. Anyone can look at it. The powers of the commission are extraordinary. But, so we don't need to reinvent this wheel. All we have to do is restore the Charter. There's only one thing missing in it, and that is that it reports to the city manager and the mayor, who have subsequently dismissed the guilty charges. This month alone, we had eight guilty findings from the CPCC, and Tom Modica overturned all eight. It's really, really difficult to get a unanimous opinion about guilt in the CPCC. And yet, over 80% of the findings of the CPCC have been overthrown. So clearly, what we should do is report to the City Council in full form and in redacted form to the community, so we have transparency. You cannot be accountable until you are transparent. I don't want to see one police officer ever again in the chambers of the CPCC. I do not want us to have the Police Department select which complaints go to the CPCC. Every complaint should be delivered, that we get that complaint within seven days, which is normal, right? Not a year later. In every meeting of the CPCC, we dismiss over 40 complaints, because it's been over 12 months. And there's the Police Officers' Bill of Rights that says that you have to be, you know, adjudicated within 12 months, or it gets dismissed. That's not acceptable to me. That means every single complaint has to go to the CPCC, and they select it. I get it. This is a real heavy-duty thing here. You know, the reason we set this commission up was because of the corruption of the Police Department in the 1990s, and we were national news because of that.
Did you, did you want to rebut Cindy's statements?
I did.
You have one minute.
Thank you. I don't invent the wheel here. I try not to lie about anything here. So Stephen Downing of the Beachcomber has done a pretty deep investigation into this incident in 1994. It turns out that fact, the woman was picked up on the road by this guy in a truck, and then she tried to rob him with a partner with a guy, right? And so while he was out with, you know, I don't know where they were going, if there was a prostitute, I don't care. But they were starting to rob his truck, so he went back to stop the robber from the truck, right? So by the time, then, of course, they ran away. So by the time the officers arrived on scene, 60 feet away, those people weren't there. There was not an abused woman in this situation. There was an aggressive assault on this guy. When he was ordered out of the car, he was stomach down on asphalt, right? He was trying to tell them that he was an honorary member of the Police Officers' Association, and he had a badge in his back pocket. When he reached for the, you know, on the ground, on your stomach, reaching, saying, "Here, in my back pocket," that's when he got shot six times. Now, you know, we've changed a lot.
I think I want to be a look, because this is a serious...
I did not interrupt you, Cindy Allen, and I expect you to have...
Excuse me, excuse me, both of you. Excuse me. Let's have a little decorum here, if you please.
I want to finish my statement, because it's really credible to this thing.
I've got about 15 seconds, Mr. Fox.
I didn't do this research. It's on the Beachcomber. If you don't, if you want to look at it, you can, and you can decide what you think about it. But I do like to have facts in front of us instead of opinions. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so this, I think, is, I would really appreciate, because this is an important thing that for the voters to know, that, first of all, Mr. Fox, you, I was there. I lived this. Regardless of what you, Mr. Downing, your donor, says or does, this is not the situation. We were dispatched, and I am, I cannot wait until these 911 teams are released. And so you and Mr. Downing know the truth, but that was not the situation. This man...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Cindy, but I don't want to have this back and forth on this one question for the entire hour. And I just would ask you both to move on from this at this time.
Well, Mr. Harry, with all due respect, this is an important, this is an important and serious allegation, again, that he has made and lied about.
And I believe, Ms. Allen, I believe that you will have the chance to answer that even more. You've answered it tonight, and I believe you'll have more opportunities to answer that situation. I honestly believe that we don't want to take up all the time on this one question.
We've got a lot of questions.
Yeah, we've got a lot of questions. Yeah, we've got a lot of questions.
We're only at number two.
And we, and we have a lot of substantive policy things that we would like to have you address.
Next question.
The next question is going back to economy. And Mr. Fox, you answer this first, please. Do you believe allowing restaurants to use public parking spots for seating is proper? Should it continue past the end of the coronavirus pandemic?
Um, actually, no, I don't believe that's a good idea. Our businesses along the corridors are dependent upon the parking when they, uh, clearly, as Broadway has suffered from the removal of a hundred to a hundred and fifty spaces, we've lost thirty-seven businesses before the panget- pandemic hit. So parking is critically important to us in the business community. And if we are going to really stimulate business development in the city, we have to get over this crazy idea that everyone's going to give up their car tomorrow because it's not happening. We don't have any mass transit here. If you're going to go to a business, you want to be able to park, get out, shop, go back into your car and go. Now here's something that I do like. I love the idea of closing off Pine Avenue because it really makes a beautiful, almost European look, you know, where they have open air businesses and we can really work on that. I'd love to redo the street so that we have like cobblestones or bricks or something like that. Uh, I think it's a really great idea. Um, parking is essential. It is one of the most important elements of the second district race. I would like to see us reopen the restaurants when we can, according to science. Right now, this should be only a temporary thing. And the reason is we have bicycle lanes right on the sidewalk here. And I'm sorry, you take a couple of drinks and if somebody steps up that sidewalk and they didn't, and somebody's going the wrong way on the bicycle lane. We've had tragedies already at Gallagher's, you know, so, um, it has to be temporary. It cannot be a solution that we, we live with forever. There will be a time when COVID is done. I don't believe we will ever go back to normal. We're going to have a new normal. And we're going to have to adjust accordingly. But safety has to come number one. Uh, not only about opening the restaurants and the bars, but also about how we can figure spaces for public safety. I think the parklets are an interesting idea on the short term only. I would not support the idea of parklets permanently, of taking up parking.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Allen.
Yes, um, thank you for that question. Yeah, I, you know, I like the parklets. And, um, and it seems like to me that, um, they're, um, being well received um, by the patrons and, um, also the businesses. But, uh, one of the things that I want to be careful about this, I understand that it's using public parking spots. Um, but one of the things I always want to be careful is to make sure that we have computed, uh, community input. And I think that's what happened, um, a, a fault of the Broadway corridor where people didn't go out and talk to the community. Um, although it seems like to me the parklets are, are awesome and I'm sure enjoying them. Um, but I would definitely like, um, to know how the community feels. I'd like to have a more input. I don't want to or ever pretend that, that I know everything, but I would definitely look forward to working with my constituents and, um, the businesses and seeing if it works for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next question.
Um, housing affordability, major issue in Long Beach and especially the second district where the majority are renters. Uh, the issue of rent control has come up as a, as a possible policy in Long Beach. Uh, would you support a rent control policy in Long Beach? Um, if, if not, why not? And, uh, I believe we'll start with Cindy, right?
Yeah, so not only would I, uh, support, uh, you know, a, a rent control, I absolutely would advocate for that. Um, I can tell you this, when I started in this primary, things are, are so much different. I mean, in the beginning knocking on doors and talking to people in the second district, these renters are, are hurting. And now we added on COVID, we added on unemployment at unprecedented rates. These renters need this, as much help and protections as, as they can get. And so not only will I, um, advocate for that, you know, of course, what the state is doing, but also locally, what else can we do to, to help, you know, our, our renters, you know, get through this? And I know the city has, has, has done some things and they're giving the thousand dollars, you know, rent, renter assistance. But I would like to see us, what else can we do? Because I don't think that we're gonna, things are going to get better anytime soon. And I can tell you so many folks in second district need, need our help.
Robert?
Great. Well, um, I've lived through a couple of de- depressions, recessions in my life, being sixty-eight. I do know what is going to happen and that will be the rents will go down. Uh, we will probably have a loss of population in the city. Last recession in ninety-two, we lost forty-four thousand people. So the supply and demand chain here is going to work its, its program the way it always does. The thing that, uh, we have rent control from the state, that was fourteen eighty-two, which passed and is now the law of the state. I am grateful, what they did not do is put in the reprogram. Because my job here is to make sure that our mom and pop rental units, uh, stay alive. And because we're the best kind, I'm a, a mom and pop rent, uh, provider, I mean, a housing provider. So I'm, I can negotiate with you. You can't pay the rent this month. That happens all the time. And I say, okay, let's negotiate. This is fine. If I have to reduce the rent for somebody, if they're a wonderful person and they're doing great, of course we do. But if they get foreclosed because they can't pay the mortgages in four months and that abatement in the federal government is only for the federally subsidized mortgages, not for all mortgages here. So we are in danger here, tremendous danger. I don't want us to see the mom and pop renters get rental owners get foreclosed and then everybody loses. I mean, when corporate takes over, everyone loses. This is why I've struggled so hard to put together a rent forgiveness program for the renters of Long Beach. I work in the Securities Exchange Commission, so I'm pretty familiar with how to make investment, uh, portfolios and instruments. What I don't want is code enforcement to go someplace, say, you need a new roof and you have to do it in thirty days.
You have fifteen.
Can't get it done. They impound your rent if you can't get it done in thirty days. That's, that part of it we need to stay away from. I think that our regular proactive rental housing inspection program is appropriate and it seems to serve its purpose well. Thank you.
Okay, next question. Uh, both of you have suggested maybe, uh, more breaks for small businesses. How should the city government recover from the revenue hit it has taken in twenty twenty? There was a thirty million dollar deficit in the last budget. What's your position on the measure A, like, I'm sorry, the measure A, sales tax increase extension? Mr. Fox, I believe you go first.
I'm opposed to proposition, the measure A. I think that was stupid. Number one, we're in a recession already. That's diagnosed, right? If we're going to attract business to the city of Long Beach, if you have the highest sales tax rate in the state, you're not going to attract a lot of people. That's why we took the city to court, you know, on this, this, the county actually, to re, on the recount. This is a terribly important thing. We have to be and present as the most business friendly, small business friendly city in the state of California. We have to do that. Income stream is really important. I mean, the city, I think, doesn't understand how income stream works. And if they do, they're doing a bad job of it. They put on the ballot a second tax on oil production. Frankly, I would wish we just wouldn't pump oil. But we have a problem here. We pumped so much oil out of the land of Long Beach in nineteen twenty-nine that the city sank eight feet. The Tyblons Trust Fund is for pumping a barrel and a half of saltwater into the caverns for every barrel we bump out.
Mr. Fox.
If we don't have that tax increment, excuse me.
Address the question if you would please, not subsidize.
We're taxing the, the oil industry. We're not going to get the income stream because they'll just stop pumping. That's the problem. So I think sales tax is really the basis of, uh, income stream in every other major city across the United States. Sales tax runs, runs the, the, the income stream of the city. Uh, we have other avenues like our oil property productions and we have cruise lines coming in. Eventually they will. But I think the most important thing we can do, we have to think for the future. And that is make this city, uh, attractive for businesses to come in here so that our people can have jobs.
You have fifteen seconds. Okay.
Well, I think I've covered it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allen?
Yeah, I can, so, um, here measure A, I can tell you right now, and I've talked about this earlier, you know, it's going back to the struggle that, that people are having. And I definitely don't want to see any more sales increases. I don't want to see more increases, the, the renters relief, you know, uh, supplemental tax that Mr. Fox just put out today. It just doesn't make any sense. People are struggling and they don't want anymore, any more taxes. And, and something like that just helps landlords, you know, again, it doesn't help renters. So when I talked about measure A, um, you know, it has, um, those funds have gone to a lot of services, you know, in the city. But I can tell you now in today's environment, the way, um, the shortfalls that we're having, that, you know, it's going to take a serious look at this entire budget and services. Um, and it was very contentious getting the, the, the budget through recently, but it's going to take a lot of, um, uh, a lot of just, um, heavy lifting to see how, where are we going to cut and how are we going to get through these tough times? Because a lot of those that I'm measuring that sales tax, you know, has gone away. Um, for a number of reasons. We don't have the visitors. We don't have the convention up and going. We don't have, um, you know, the hotels, you know, up and going. So there's going to be a shortfall, you know, from, from that as well. And I think most importantly is how are we going to recover? And what programs are going to be, you know, a priority, um, when we look at the shortfalls that we have, you know, in the budget?
Okay, next question.
Well, the Broadway corridor has been obviously a major issue where the city narrowed Broadway down to two lanes and added a bike lane. And depending, love it or hate it, depending on who you talk to, uh, some people think it's unsafe, uh, other people love it. Uh, what are your views on the Broadway corridor? And would you support any sort of reconfiguration? Uh, if you're elected, uh, Robert will go.
No worries. Yeah, so, um, I think that, you know, we, we talked about, about this. You know, one of the things that I find on, on Broadway is, uh, the way that it was designed. I talked earlier about, um, when we talked about the parklets, is making sure that we've had computed, um, community input. And, um, as I had the privilege of knocking on so many of people's doors that are listening, um, I think that was the one thing. There's some people that like it and there's some people that don't. But one other thing I can tell you for sure what happened in that process is there was not input from the community. Or even when they did have input, uh, things were done without taking in their suggestions. So why even have that in this, this, why even do this if you're not going to listen to input? Me personally, um, driving down Broadway, um, I personally feel that there's so many, you know, there's blind spots. And I think that we have to sit back and say, how do we make this safe? One of the things that, um, I have said is I'm always going to be, you know, I want the, you know, public safety and the best interest of the, of the public is first and foremost to me. And so I am going to want to work closely with the, the, with the engineers um, on and address, you know, these issues, um, on the Broadway corridor. But most importantly, you know, it's safety. Um, I also have talked to, you know, the, the police chief about this. Um, I like to know, you know, the accidents. I want to know, um, you know, the traffic. And I think that we want full transparency on everything that has happened on, um, on the Broadway. And then go back to the community and do a true listening sessions with the community and figure, you know, and figure out what's best moving forward to make sure that, um, a corridor is, is safe, um, for everyone. And then also, you know, the businesses, you know, the businesses, you know, are, you know, are hurting. And we want to make sure that we, you know, I'm always going to be an advocate. That's why I'm endorsed by the Chamber and Biz Fed and all of these because I am a business. I care about these businesses. And so we weren't, we're going to want to also talk with them and see, um, where their needs can best be served um, with any reconfigurations of the corridor.
Great, thank you. And Robert?
Um, I became pro- a president of Broadway again because of the Broadway road diet. Uh, they called a meeting at Gallagher's of most of the business owners that could show up that day. And they elected me president because I founded the Broadway Corridor Association in nineteen ninety-two. We had meetings, but under Suja Lowenthal, and we had a beautification of Broadway project. And we came up with a program and a graph even of what we wanted. Diagonal parking on one side of the street and a bike lane on the other side of the street. And we thought, okay, we could live with that. Great. I woke up one morning because I live on Broadway and I go, what in the world is this? So the first thing I did was I went down and talked to the traffic engineer along with Mary Colvin, uh, and Mina Barnes, uh, who are members of the Broadway Corridor Association. And they were implacable. You know, they just didn't want to hear us. They didn't want to have anything to do with it. They wouldn't change. What we're dealing here is systematic, that we have an autocratic city hall staff at this point in time. It's not even the council's fault. We have a staff that's out of control. They don't listen to the people. They don't give any opportunity for the people, like Cindy was saying, which is a good idea. My idea originally was let's have a community meeting like over at the Methodist Church, Grace Methodist, you know, and have everybody's input. Let's hire people to make the designs for us and figure out what the majority community really wants. Broadway is hideous right now. Uh, we've had over three hundred accidents. The city would not record any of this stuff. So the people had to do it themselves. We would sit on the corners that the city was designated as the counting areas, right? We did our own counts. Our traffic has gone from fifteen thousand cars originally to less than two thousand today. They took away parking on the south side of the street, which is coastal commission zone, and that's against the law. They also, I got fifteen seconds. They also violated California law because Broadway is the exit street from downtown for emergency earthquake or fire. Now, in a congested Broadway road diet, you couldn't get out of the city and there's no other exit. This is a fail and we must correct it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's broaden the discussion just a little bit here. Almost philosophical, if you will. Uh, do you believe that there's been systemic racism in Long Beach? And if so, what should be done with, about it? Mr. Fox?
I think of course there is systemic racism in the city. I had long talks with people, you know, particularly after this, uh, Black Lives Matter movement downtown. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to make a statement, you know, about Black Lives Matter or the movement until a certain time had passed. So I asked my friend, uh, when is it time? When is it okay for us to become allies and friends? And then I started talking about it. I participated in the protests and all this stuff. The systematic racism here is that in the police department, they pull over black people like nineteen percent more than they do white people, given the same population stats. And the Hispanic community is also impacted this way and the Cambodian community. So it's sort of like, oh my God, you don't look white and crispy, you know, you're going to get pulled over for something. That systematic itself, just statistics alone show us that that's a problem. And here's the systematic racism only has one solution. You have to have a moral top. If the police chief is a highly moral person with strong ethical values, it communicates down to all avenues of the police department. We've had great chiefs in the past. And I know that works. Community policing is part of it, uh, that Cindy had mentioned, I think. Uh, I was part of the community policing thing. It sort of stops that systematic racism thing. If you are interacting one-on-one, it's really hard to hate people in a one-on-one situation. When we find, for instance, in business licensing, you know, we have a one percent, you know, uh, advantage for somebody who happens to be minority for businesses, doing business with the city. And people of color do not get that advantage almost a hundred percent of the time.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
Okay, no worries. Uh, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yeah, there absolutely is systemic racism in everything, you know, and we can talk about police. We can talk about the criminal justice system. We know that. We know what's going on in our country. Um, you look at, uh, what's happening, you know, in, um, in housing. And, uh, and so we've got a, we've got a lot of work to do. One of the things that I was just talking about at a, at a forum is we've got to get back in the city where we used to help. I think one of the things that, that we can do with the black and brown communities is, yes, rent, rent is important, but let's help create wealth. Let's help create wealth. And let's do that by, you know, offering these assistant programs and give people opportunities for home ownership. I can tell you, I talked about this, like I said earlier in the introduction, I came from a poor family. You know, we struggled on welfare, but I was. You know, we struggled on welfare, but I was white. And things were easier for me because of the color of my skin, and I recognize that. One of the things that has been, um, going through this, this, uh, this reconciliation process, I have done a lot of listening, a lot of listening to the black, black and brown communities. And, um, and I think I come from a very mixed family. I thought I, you know, I had an understanding of the level of the systematic racism in our country and our city, I had no idea. But I tell you, I, one of the things that I think we need to do is white people need to listen more to what's happening. And I can tell you, the black and brown communities are gonna have a listener in in me. Um, I know we have a lot of work to do, um, but I I have the courage and the strength to be, to be a good white advocate for for the black and brown communities.
Thank you.
Okay, homelessness, another major issue in the district and the city, um, with a lot of residents concerned about homelessness in Bixby Park area and other parts of the second district. Uh, what more do you feel the city could be doing to address the homeless issue in Long Beach and the second district specifically? And Cindy, we'll start with you.
Yeah, yes, I mean homelessness is one of, um, outside of COVID and and working is one of the biggest issues. You know, in the, uh, in the second district. Um, one of the things that I've talked about is when you look at the multi-service center, you know, uh, they are open Monday to Friday, nine to five. And yet homelessness is a twenty-four hour problem. There was just an incident that happened, um, during COVID where a friend of mine called and said, there's a, a person I know that's fallen into homelessness. And those, the the service wasn't open and she parked her car and she got hit and she died in her car, um, do it with a car accident and she was sleeping in her car. One of the things that this is for whatever reasons people fall into homelessness, any given moment, it could happen to any one of us. And not to have these services from the multi-service center open twenty-four seven is a travesty. Let's just start there. Homelessness is a very, very complicated issue. You have mental health, and and I understand that. But can we just start by saying we need to make sure that we have, we have services available, that triage and the multi-service center? I also want to make sure that the fire department has, you know, the heart team and we have the mental health providers. So many, so many of these, uh, folks that are, that are homeless, they also need, uh, you know, mental health. And when I want to make sure, um, that they have those services, um, provided. And also make sure that we're always funding, um, you know, like vouchers. Um, and that we have those programs, you know, in place, uh, to help the homeless. One of the things I can tell you without a doubt that homelessness is is top of the issue for it for the second district, and it's going to be a a priority for me moving forward when I, um, when I'm elected.
Robert?
Oh, thank you. Um, we've had this homeless problem going on for decades now, this is an American problem. And I think we have to look at this as a regional problem. We cannot solve this thing alone in Long Beach, we have to be regional. Um, I sat on the boards of the homeless summits for four years and was instrumental in creating the multi-service center for the homeless, uh, back in the day. Like Cindy, I'm shocked that we're only open nine to five, but it's worse than that. They're only open nine to eleven. And then they have, no, line to twelve, and then they have an hour off for lunch and everybody vacates the whole building and they come back at one o'clock and they leave at four. So it's not actually five. We have very limited staff there. I, Paul Duncan was just appointed as the homeless coordinator for the city of Long Beach. This is a fail, you know, we need a twenty-four seven operation, I agree with Cindy, absolutely one hundred percent, you're spot on Cindy. Uh, we need to fund it, because I gotta tell you something. If you don't fix something right away, it becomes far more expensive on a purely financial basis, but on a humanitarian basis, this is just appalling to me. Uh, I had a friend, um, Imogen Dancy, uh, God bless her, love her to death, she used to work at the thrift store up at, uh, St. Vincent de Paul. And she needed help, she'd gotten to the hospital, seven days, came out, didn't have a place to live, and she couldn't lay down in the car because of the, of what happened, right? Uh, in the hospital, she called me on the phone and I said, Robert, can you help me? I need to get some places to lay down flat. I said, well, come on over to my house, that's fine, you can do that. Said, no, no, I need something better than that, I need something longer term. I called and called and called, I mean, all day long, there was one number, five seven zero four five zero zero. And if it hadn't been for my name recognition, running for the second district, I never would have gotten through to anyone to help. I had to dial numbers that didn't exist, like five seven eight one and five seven eight two. And finally, I got help for that woman with a hundred dollar voucher in a hotel. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we've spoken a little bit about this, uh, earlier on, but let me delve a little deeper here. Parking has been a district issue since the invention of the automobile. What should be done about it, particularly in light of the new accessory dwelling unit laws and the push for more affordable housing in the second district? Robert?
I think I go first.
Right.
Parking is the issue of the second district. Um, I led the charge in Alameda Beach to put in diagonal parking, uh, which gave us forty percent more parking. Uh, I was on my hands and knees measuring little red stones twenty-five feet in order to make that work. We really worked in a public-private partnership with the city to provide more parking for Alameda Beach, it's not enough. As I've walked the second district and I walked it four times now, okay? Um, we need preferential parking in the, in all of our neighborhoods. That means that anybody who doesn't live in your neighborhood cannot park there after nine o'clock at night. Right now, we just developed the downtown with one parking space per unit, nine hundred thousand dollar condos. Do you really think these people only have one car? So they're gonna be parking in Alameda Beach, there's gonna be battle over parking. This is crazy. So on the streets, which are wide enough, like in Rose Park, I suggest that we do the diagonal parking and make one-way streets coming one way and down another. This is community input is what's driving this, so it has to be community-centered. Uh, we need to have marked spaces in Rose Park, most of the streets are not even marked. So two cars will park stupid, where we could have got three cars in there, and people are angry and upset about that. And it makes battles between neighbors also, so that's something we can do. Um, I think it's really important for us to hire a parking manager for the city of Long Beach to coordinate all of the kinds of, uh, solutions that we have, like building parking structures. We're building a parking structure for the, the employees at City Hall that went, by the way, from two thousand people to over six thousand people, holy smokes. And they get to have a parking structure. But how, if you were gonna go to council at five o'clock, where are you going to park? We don't have a a solution here, so I think a parking manager is a really important thing that we need to coordinate our efforts and have solutions for the people.
All right, let me ask, uh, let me ask a little bit of a follow-up there. Uh, you didn't mention the push to have more housing in Long Beach. Uh, the accessory dwelling units, the granny flats, and, uh, the I'll just say lighter zoning that's been, uh, recommended in a number of areas. How do you deal with the housing issues without the parking?
I think it becomes very problematic, you know, unless we really are gonna sit down and develop mass transit, like they have in Barcelona, for instance, you know, there's four routes around the city and everybody lives within three blocks of the route. People have to get to work. Since eighty-eight percent of our people work outside the city, they need a car to get there. The bus takes two and a half hours to get to Huntington Beach, it takes two hours to get to Torrance. Nobody can work an eight-hour shift in a four-hour to five-hour commute. So when you restrict ADUs and say, okay, you don't need any parking to do this, we're just adding to the problem. I think we need to be much more sensitive to people and their lives. This is the way people live. They have to go to work, come home. I'm concerned about the state taking over zoning. Zoning should be a local issue. It really, really should. We make the best decisions on a local basis. We know what capacity we can hold, whether our sewers are up to stuff, whether our infrastructure is ready to go for it. This is why I'm so adamant that we keep local, uh, control over zoning and density.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Allen?
Yes, okay, so I'll start, uh, first with your, uh, with your parking question. Um, without a doubt, I mean, parking is a huge issue. And, uh, I don't have to put little fake white tickets on people's car for them to know that, it was really cruel. And I got a lot of calls about that. Um, but I tell you, what we, what we do need is, um, we need true, we need true, um, innovation for, um, for parking. Um, one of the things, um, that I've been talking about is, you know, you talk about parking and the environment, people are are driving around and around looking for parking spots, you know, in their community. And this is so easy to do. I did this in my previous world, I built these parking, you know, apps so that people would know exactly where a parking spot is available. And there and I, I was talking to a resident and she takes Uber and to get to her house, that's just unacceptable. We also, um, need to make sure that any new developments that that happen in the city that they require, you know, they have, they require part, uh, parking. We also need to look at, um, uh, require more parking, um, to be added. Um, we also need to look at, uh, private-public partnerships. Um, there's places all over the city, um, whether it's the Edison Build- Building, whether it's MOLA, where, um, people, these are empty parking lots. We're most impacted by parking when people are leaving out of the city. And as, um, we, we talked about this early, seventy percent of our, of our residents travel out of the city and come back for work, and so that's when we're most impacted. So I think if we could look and forge uh, these public-private partnerships, um, for parking is another solution. I'm also an advocate for red curb, red curb audit audits. Um, also, if there's, you know, if there's a way that we can do diagonal parking, um, and we can make that more efficient, I'm for all of the above. I think every single thing is on the table when it comes to making sure that residents in the city can find a place to park.
Thank you, and you have one minute to, uh, address the housing question, housing and zoning question.
Yeah, so I mean, listen, we are, um, housing is, um, the most, it's a crisis in the city. And so I'm always gonna be an advocate for, uh, you know, up zoning and making sure that we have, you know, we have enough housing, that we have affordable housing, that we have inclusionary housing, and that we have trans- uh, transitional housing. Um, and so, um, and also when you talk about, you know, man, uh, mass transit, yes, we need to, we need to work on that too. We need to make sure that transit is done with attentionality, um, that we have transit that's, that's, uh, that makes sense. You know, when you, um, are looking at people that are taking this mass transit and leaving our city, um, that first and last mile of transit is is important. And so as we are looking at, you know, increasing density, we need to also take into consideration um, mass transit, it's gonna be an important element to that.
Okay, thank you. Think if you're ready, we, one last question.
Got time for one last question, and, uh, it's about the Queen Mary, the, the jewel of the second district. Uh, Long Beach's landmark sits in the second district and we all know that the ship's needs some serious repairs and its operators have been facing some serious financial problems. We just have a story today in the Long Beach Post. What, uh, what would you, what do you feel the city has done enough in its role to maintain the ship? And what would you like to see for the ship's future? And Cindy, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm concerned about our queen. Um, the city has obviously not done enough. When you look at the disrepair that it's in, I mean, I was on the Queen Mary uh, not too long ago, and I could literally put my finger like through the metal, like what has happened? What has happened to this ship? And, um, and then, you know, you look at how much of these taxpayer dollars have gone to this and hasn't been accounted for. I know that the city has, uh, has, um, Laura, Laura Dow has worked on this audit. But, um, I want to make sure that we have a good operator. I'm concerned about the operator, be quite frankly, I'm concerned about the, that he, he's gonna make it. He off, obviously, um, hasn't done a good job at, uh, keeping up the Queen Mary. And, uh, where I live and I come home, or every day I, I look out my, my window and I get to see that beautiful ship and I want to make sure that it's preserved. And so, um, we have to, I think the city really has to step up, and yes, I think that it, they're accountable. I don't know what happened in this situation, that we are in a situation today where we have our beautiful jewel of Long Beach that hasn't been taken care of.
And Robert?
Great. My turn here. Uh, Mary Rohr is a really good friend of mine who is, uh, part of the Save the Queen Foundation. We've been talking about this stuff for decades. Uh, the city did not vet the people who are gonna take over the management of the Queen Mary. Urban Commons had absolutely no experience in rehabilitation of any kind of historic monument. They didn't have engineering's experience, in fact, they didn't even have hotel experience, it was bizarre. And what they did is they sold stock and bond on their company to a company in Singapore, which you just reported on. Uh, and now the guy's in jail in Singapore. This was a five-year investigation, so this should be no surprise for anybody whatsoever. So Urban Commons is now out. Great. We own the Queen Mary, right? So it's going to be managed by a, a company right at the moment. But, you know, this city hasn't done a smart job. We just gave twenty-three million dollars to Zaharoni, who, uh, was head of Urban Commons, and
He's, he's not head, but that's, that's okay, yeah.
Anyway, what happened was it was based upon, uh, customers coming off of the cruise ships, right? Well, when the cruise ship stopped, there's no money to back it up, so now we're using the Thailand's trust fund to pay the twenty-three million dollar bond. We have consequences here, these are business decisions. And I think I'm a pretty good analytic when it comes to business. Um, I want to look deeply into the question of like how it is financially stable and how we can repair this stuff. I'm way into restoration. When I was very young, I worked for a furniture restorer and just totally got off of it. I love restoring antiques, my home is filled with nineteenth century and eighteenth century antiques, I love that stuff. Hey, you've been at my house, Kelly. And the Queen is fabulous. I mean, I go on the Queen every Wednesday out, outside of COVID for Rotary, and it, we need to, we need to really have a concerted, common-sense, business-oriented search for a new operator. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I really want to say, uh, speaking on behalf of Kelly and myself, I want to thank you both for, uh, maintaining decorum and also for thoughtful answers. Uh, this is indeed what our democracy is all about. Uh, we will offer you both, uh, two minutes for a closing statement. And, uh, I believe it makes sense to have Cindy start. And then Robert will get the last word, if you will. So, Ms. Allen?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so my, my goal in this, uh, entire campaign has just uh, been to stick to the issues and discuss policy. We have some really tough days, uh, ahead of us. And we need a leader that first of all tells the truth about who they are and what they've done and their experiences. Um, we need someone that has the real courage to address, you know, just the tough issues that we have. I mean, we have serious issues facing the second district. People have food insecurities, they can't pay their rent. I mean, this is just only the beginning, so they have serious issues, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, we have COVID nineteen, which is undeniably the, the, the biggest health crisis that has happened to our country and has happened to our city. And we have to make sure that we curb the spread of that and safely get our people back to work. Um, like I said, make sure that people are, that we have affordable housing, that we have inclusionary housing, so that Long Beach stays diverse. That's what's so beautiful about this great city, that's what I love, that's what you love, is that adversity, and let's make sure that never goes away. And that means that we have a home for everyone. Everyone has a place that they can rest their head in, and then the beautiful diversity of this city never changes. I also want to make sure that we bring meaningful police reform. Meaningful, and I talked about it, and I look forward to talking about this more to any of you out there that want to contact me. My phone number is on my website at cindyallan.com. If you have any questions, I look forward to, to hearing from you and and learning more about the issues. Um, also, you know, our environment, that is, that is huge to me, and I, and I, unfortunately, we didn't get those questions tonight. And this keeps on happening over and over on the campaign trail where people are not talking about protecting, you know, our beautiful environment and climate and climate change that is happening. Ask anyone who there whose house are burning down right now about climate change, and you're gonna have an advocate in me. I just want to thank you so much, and I can find out more at cindyallan.com.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Harry. This was a difficult decision for me to run for the council seat. Uh, I've been a community activist, uh, for thirty-six years here. Um, I have tried to advocate on behalf of our people for a long time. Um, and I've been Um, and I've been fierce and I've been determined to make sure that the people get heard. And we are at a stage now where reform is absolutely required, not just in the police department, but in the city itself. As our people are making less and less money. Our city staff has sixteen hundred ten people making over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Over seven hundred people making over two hundred thousand dollars a year, eighty-two people making over three hundred thousand dollars a year. And now we've started the four hundred thousand dollar club. At one point or another, we're going to have to rebalance the books here in this city. So the people are, it's relational to our people here. I think Doug Halbert was amazing when he said, I'm going to take a voluntary ten percent pay cut. I would suggest that we do a twenty-five percent paycheck, check, uh, cut of anybody who's making a hundred thousand dollars or more. If they think they can find a job someplace else for that amount of money, God bless them. But right now we're in a crisis and we need to really work together. I have always listened to the people. And I think there's an old saying, uh, in the world that's really important. It was by, uh, Maya Angelou. She said, when somebody tells you who they are. Accept their first, uh, the, accept it right now. When they tell you who they are, accept it right now. So you have a choice here. You get to accept who I am or, and if you don't like it, that's fine, you know? I tell the truth, I don't hide anything and I work with other people. That's what presidents of neighborhood associations do. Um, I want to work with the council to come up with these creative solutions in a friendly, compassionate and caring manner. That help all of our people. And you can look at me at foxforcouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thanks, everybody, and, uh, we appreciate you joining us tonight. And we're going to have, uh, subsequent stories on the debate, on the Press Telegram and Long Beach Post website.
And we'll have more debates throughout the week, uh, for all of the other races as well. So with that, good night and thanks again.
Great, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.